All right. Is that good? Welcome, everybody. It's January 4th, 2022, the first council meeting of the new year. We'll do roll call, call to order. Councilwoman Dominguez.
Here.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferrer.
Here.
Councilwoman Zaprilla.
Here.
Councilwoman Barak.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have to roll call myself, do I? Okay. So approval of the agenda. Any discussion? All vote yea or nay?
Yes.
Yea.
Yes.
All right. Motion approved. All right. So approval of the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? You got a second? Okay. Sorry, I didn't. There you go. Approved, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yes. All right. Um. So do I go through the regular council meeting minutes, or is that just part of that one?
That's just part. So when your consent agenda, that's what they're approving is all of that. Wonder if there's a question if they have any.
So we want mayoral appointments. Our mayor pro temp. I would like to, I would like to make Councilwoman Dominguez the mayor pro temp.
And so then you can call to the council.
Okay, so call to, on the vote, yea or nay? Or is it a roll call, it's a roll call or consent?
Consent.
Yea or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
And everybody? True. Next, I'd like to call for the West Liberty Fire Chief. Kurt Sickles. Approved or? Approved or? Oh. Oh, we take the over first.
Actually, you have to, so. That's okay. So what you have to do is that's your mayor appointment, your mayor appointment is recognizing that Fire Chief Sickles has been elected by the West Liberty Volunteer Board to be Fire Chief. And so you're, you're calling for that appointment, so you need a motion and a second and a vote for your council to approve the appointment. And then once you get through that, then you need you do your oath of office.
Okay, so the West Liberty Fire Department has voted to appoint Kurt Sickles as chief of the department.
A motion?
We need a motion.
Keep going.
And then a vote?
Yes.
No?
No.
Vote.
Okay.
So. Let me do this. Can you raise your, raise your hands for notes so I can have a visible recording of your vote? No. And then your vote yes, a visible recording. So at this time, council is not supporting the, or they have voted down the appointment. And we do not have an attorney here to provide us guidance to move forward with that decision. And so we will have to move forward with our next line item on our agenda. And we will have to follow up with the attorney and get guidance.
So you're going to run a department without you?
Uh, we will. Your, your volunteer fire department has elected Fire Chief Sickles to be your leader.
Correct.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Yes, it does.
So we'll move on to the mayoral proclamation. The proclamation for slavery and human trafficking prevention during the month of January 2022. We have the West Liberty Rotary Club request to bring awareness. At this time, do I need to read the proclamation?
Usually it can be very long, but most mayors will read that, just for the record.
Um, proclamation for slavery and human trafficking prevention during this month of January 2022. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right, inalienable right to freedom, and added the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of focused labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas this heinous crime is found within our own community. And whereas the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery has been working since 2005 to abolish all forms of human trafficking through education, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help, help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And now, therefore, I am Mayor McCullough of the City of West Liberty. To hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as slavery and human trafficking prevention month, and encourage all our citizens to become informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work toward solutions to end trafficking in all of its forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-3737-888.
Then you're called to have a motion and a, and a second by your council to accept the proclamation. And then we will publish the proclamation.
And then a vote, any, any discussion? And then a vote?
Ladies' motion. Thank you.
And then votes.
Are.
Yes. Omar, are you a yes?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, we will post the proclamation to our website and our social media page for that recognition and confirmation during that.
Tom Barr knows well, he would have liked to have been here this evening because Tom's already kind of promotes this, but Tom is 2,000 miles away spending the winter, so. He has to find a way to get through that, and I will be.
And they do recognize that we do have Sarah Savelcheck present on Zoom.
Is.
Incoming President Sarah Savelcheck on Zoom with us, so.
Um, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the vendor voucher claims. We'll move to approve second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Probably for the, there was one item just to visa for like 60,000. Is that for one purchase, or is there itemized purchase? That's for all department head supervisors. So I would consider it's the entire billing for that. And you're always welcome to come by City Hall and we can provide. But just like supervisors have each have a visa.
Yes.
Oh, okay. And we do have a credit card policy in place now that they are required to follow with that policy along with the purchase agreement policy. And again, anytime you have any questions specific to those purchases. It is the total.
Yep. Um, okay, call for votes.
Did you?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Motion taxes. Um, okay. So next, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, the public comments and correspondence. And this is a time set aside for comments from the public. I, we have a couple of groups that want to speak tonight. Is there any particular order that I should go in, or? I'm happy to give you 10 minutes with the translation that is needed. Um, and these are the. Forgive me, the full name is.
Excluded and essential workers.
Thank you. Excluded and essential workers.
Sure. My name is Emily. I'll be providing language access. We have several individuals who'd like to speak.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Liliana Perez.
My name is Liliana Perez.
Vivo aquí en West Liberty alrededor de 14 años.
I live in West Liberty for about 14 years now.
Madre de cuatro hijos.
I'm a mother of four children.
Cabeza de la familia.
Head of household.
Muchos de ustedes me conocen. Trabajo aquí en el super de, del pueblo.
A lot of people here know me. I work in the super of this town.
Lugar de, durante la pandemia nunca se cerró. Estuvimos trabajando día a día.
A place during the pandemic that never closed. We continued working daily.
¿Cómo me afectó la pandemia?
How did the pandemic affect me?
Gracias a Dios, a mí, en mi hogar, no, no nos enfermamos.
Thanks to God, in my home, we didn't get sick.
Pero muchos de mis compañeros, de la familia de mis compañeros, de mi comunidad sí se vieron afectados.
A lot of my friends and their families and the community were affected.
Pero sí les puedo decir que psicológicamente me afectó demasiado el levantarme día a día con el temor de enfermarme y llevar el virus a mis hijos.
But I can tell you mentally, this affected me a lot, the fear to get the virus and to give it to my children.
Y yo no tengo ninguna garantía como trabajadora.
And I don't have any guarantees as a worker.
¿Por qué? No lo entiendo.
Because I don't understand.
Estoy aquí en representación mía de mis compañeros.
I'm here representing myself and with my friends.
Pidiendo su apoyo con el estímulo económico.
Asking for your support through stimulus check.
Que fue otorgado para la comunidad latina, el cual no lo recibimos.
That was given out, but a lot of people didn't receive it.
Quiero pedirle su total colaboración.
I would like to ask for your collaboration.
Su apoyo, su apoyo.
Your support.
No vamos a parar hasta conseguir algo.
Because we're gonna keep, we're not gonna stop until we get something.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Vanessa Puna.
My name is Vanessa Puna.
Y vivo aquí en la ciudad de West Liberty alrededor de cuatro años.
I live here in West Liberty for about four years now.
Yo quiero contar la historia sobre lo que fue la pandemia y los beneficios que no tuvimos como indocumentados en este país.
I want to talk a little bit about my story during the pandemic and the benefits that we didn't receive as undocumented workers.
Bueno, no sé si el, el, las personas que estuvieron antes aquí no nos tomaron en cuenta simplemente porque somos indocumentados o porque por aquí razón.
I'm not sure if the people here that were before you didn't take us into account because we're undocumented.
Pero nosotros hoy estamos aquí apoyando lo que es al Fondo de Trabajadores Excluidos.
Or for a different reason, we're here today to support the offended excluded workers.
Yo fui una de las personas excluidas durante la pandemia porque no tuve un trabajo. Me destituyeron de mi trabajo porque estuve enferma alrededor de 15 días.
I was an excluded worker during the pandemic. I lost my job because I was out for 15 days.
Y durante esos 15 días, yo no tuve apoyo del gobierno, no tuve apoyo de familiares porque no tengo cerca.
During those 15 days, I didn't receive any support from the government or family. I don't have family nearby.
En esos 15 días, para mí fue triste porque yo soy madre soltera, solo tengo una niña y vivo sola en mi casa con ella.
And those 15 days, it was very sad for me. I'm a single mother of one and I was alone at home.
Y por los motivos que yo estuve enferma, igual no pude luchar por ella ni por mí misma. Y gracias a Dios, tengo amistades que me apoyaron en esos momentos.
Because of the reasons that I was sick, I wasn't able to stand up for myself and my daughter. Thanks to friends, I got some support.
Pero no recibí ningún estímulo, nunca lo he recibido. No he recibido bonos del gobierno ni nada parecido.
I never received a stimulus check or any other support, like bonuses from the government.
Y hoy estamos aquí con el grupo Escuche Mi Voz para que, por favor, pedirles a ustedes si nos pueden apoyar para tener algo para nosotros. Algo que pues creo que lo merecemos como participantes de este país, aunque no seamos documentados, pero creo que también tenemos.
I'm here today with the group Escuche Mi Voz to ask for support for excluded workers because we didn't receive the support and we worked during the pandemic as well.
Y queremos pedir su apoyo.
And I'm here to ask for your support.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es José Andrade.
Good afternoon, my name is Jose.
Y yo tengo alrededor aquí en West Liberty como unos 14 años.
I've been living here in West Liberty for about 14 years.
Y a mí la pandemia me afectó, este, tenía que yo salir al trabajo. Y, y tengo una niña y tenía, en ese tiempo yo tenía una niña de siete meses y me tuve que quedar fuera por no, para no regresar a mi casa.
During the pandemic, I was affected. I had to go to work every day. I had a seven-month-old baby at home and I didn't go home because I didn't want to drop them.
Y yo me tuve que quedar en un hotel.
I stayed in a hotel.
Alrededor de dos meses.
For about two months.
Y pues estamos aquí por, para que los ayuden ustedes.
We're here to ask for support from you all. Gracias.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es.
¿Cuántos más van a hablar? Si puedo levantarla en mano. Uno.
Creo que cuatro son más.
Yo creo.
There's two more and then Ruth will know it a lot.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Ruth. Como ustedes nos lo pidieron, nosotros traemos la, la petición por escrito. Es la carta que le voy a entregar a los atacarías para que él la lea en inglés. Y si a ellos gustan, la puedo leer en español para que mis compañeros le escuchen.
Just like you asked us for before, we prepared a letter with our plan. I'm going to give the letter to Jose and we have signed it. Jose is gonna read in English and I'll read it in Spanish.
Como trabajadores esenciales, arriesgamos nuestra salud y seguridad todos los días para mantener la sociedad en funcionamiento y asegurarnos de que todos reciban comida, refugio, educación, transporte, y atención médica. Todo lo que se necesita para sobrevivir. Pero en los últimos dos años, demasiados trabajadores de primera línea que producen valor fueron excluidos del control de estímulo, los pagos por cuidado de niño y los seguros de desempleo, lo que arrastró la recuperación económica en un momento crítico. Gracias al American Plan ARPA, West Liberty ahora tiene más de medio millón de dólares para abordar el impacto negativo económico y de salud pública del COVID-19. Los usos permitidos incluyen la ayuda directa a los hogares y el pago de primas para los trabajadores esenciales. Exigimos que se invierta el dinero de ARPA en, de West Liberty en un fondo de trabajadores excluidos para distribuir 1,400 en asistencia directa a cada residente de West Liberty que fue excluido de las rondas anteriores de ayuda de la pandemia. Según los datos de las oficinas del censo de Estados Unidos, estimamos de entre 100 a 400 trabajadores excluidos de West Liberty. Por lo tanto, en un fondo de trabajadores excluidos podrían invertirse entre mil, entre 140,000 y 522,000 en pagos directos a los trabajadores que se quedaron atrás. Dado que West Liberty ya recibió la primera mitad de su asignación de ARPA de 522,000. Exigimos que la ciudad asigne 261,000 a un fondo de trabajadores excluidos ahora para garantizar un alivio inmediato para hasta 186 trabajadores excluidos. Si más de 186 residentes solicitan un fondo, la ciudad puede invertir una porción correspondiente de la segunda ronda una vez que se reciban a finales de este trimestre. Al igual que el Condado de Johnson, Iowa, y otros estados como Nueva York, New Jersey, Washington, los únicos requisitos de elegibilidad para un fondo de trabajadores excluidos de West Liberty deben ser prueba de identidad como un pasaporte, certificado de nacimiento, tarjeta de identificación nacional, carta de asignación gubernamental, o sin fines de lucro. Un comprobante de residencia en West Liberty como cualquier carta o documento con la dirección y el nombre indicado. Una auto certificación de ingresos anuales inferiores a 75,000 por persona. Una auto certificación de exclusión del alivio pandémico anterior como seguro de desempleo o cheque de estímulo. Esto es más de lo correcto o lo justo por hacer según el Instituto de Política Económica. El aumento del dólar y compensación para los trabajadores de salarios bajos conduce a un aumento de 1,20 en la actividad económica más un 6,4% en nuevos ingresos por impuestos a las ventas. Una inversión de 350,000 en trabajadores excluidos produciría 420,000 en estímulos económicos para la economía local más 22,400 en nuevos ingresos por impuestos a las ventas. Nuestra organización trabajará con ustedes para conectar a los trabajadores excluidos con un programa juntos podemos brindar el alivio efectivo y eficiente a las personas de nuestra comunidad que trabajan más duro y más lo necesitan. Firmado por el equipo de central de Escucha Mi Voz en West Liberty.
Okay, now it's my turn. I'm not going to repeat the entire document. I'm gonna emphasize there's a few points there. Association of Warriors, Sisters of Health and Safety, every day, teach society, run it, and to make sure everyone gets the thing they need to survive, like food, shelter, transportation, healthcare. Thanks to the care program, West Liberty now has half a million dollars to address the needs of the coalition of excluded workers. They are demanding 400 dollars per person. The equivalent, the number they are representing would be the equivalent of 400,000 dollars out of this money that we go to them in case the Silicones decide to work us out. And they are following the guidelines of Iowa City, Johnson County, and several other entities when it comes to who gets what. And the first one is proof of identity such as passport, birth certificate, national ID card, etc. Proof of residency in West Liberty. An assertion that you are not making more than 75,000 dollars a year. And they are making the point that investing this money in the community will reverberate in such a way that the money will stay in the community and we will go further. Sign the paper. My personal point is, these workers are people that pay taxes to begin with because nobody in town, whether it's West Liberty Foods or the supermarket, gets to free money without pay, under cash or anything. And that money, if you are undocumented, you, you will never see as you'd like to have one penny. Now, this is, this is the reality of the town and in my personal opinion, I am behind this. Thank you.
Yep. Are you finished? Yeah, yes, I would like to, I guess, a little bit of research on this and I kind of want to share my thoughts in regards to what I read in Migration Policy Institute article that claims, and this is their words, that more than 4 million of approximately 5 million children under the age of 18 who have an unauthorized immigrant parent are US-born citizens. Now with that being said, I know that there is question as to whether or not legally we can give federal funds to people with status that are not US citizens. But with that being said, I think it's important to understand that a lot of them have children that have, are born here in the United States. And because of that, they are eligible and therefore, because they fall within that gap, they don't get this meaningless money or the childcare credit. So I think.
The classification point, you don't need to be a citizen to get the money. You have to be a resident.
Okay. But, okay.
The point is about it.
But, but, but whatever the, the parameters are for that, my, my question, I guess, is then maybe there would be a caveat to that for allowing some money to be given because of the children that are US citizens. Granted, we, we don't have an awful lot to give, but there could be kind of a fund that is set up in regards to paying for the particular residents here in town that do have children that are residents here. Other comments? In that letter, though, that was stated, I know they were asking 1,400, is that correct?
Yes.
And right in the letter, they have immediate relief for up to 130 excluded workers?
That's a, can I get his number?
Okay. That's what they're. 186.
186.
Because you're asking for, or demanding, city allocate the first 261,000. That's definitely over the amount of, the amount of per stipend for 180. So that's why I was just questioning where you came up with 261,000.
I'm sorry, I didn't have. I, I'm just do, I have a city public comment where we can't speak, so. I'm happy to speak, but I didn't want to take it out of my turn if you're looking at me.
Oh, that's, I'm okay, I mean. That's just a general question. Yeah. And if, I don't know if you would like to answer or not.
If, I mean, are we allowed to have the group answer that question, or?
It's up to me.
All right, then, yes, I'd like to.
So I just will comment on your first thing because I was absolutely right, this pandemic relief is meant for workers that are excluded and undocumented and they don't need to be documented or have US children. So my question is, como, and your second question is, how did we come up with the 186?
The 180, and it's written in here, because for 1,400 per person, it doesn't calculate for 180 people.
Right. Like Jose said, it's an estimate. I don't know more as we identify people, but it's unclear exactly how much, how many undocumented folks are here, so it was an estimate.
Did I get your question answered? Was it the 261 that you were? Yeah, because it just didn't add. Because 1,400 times 180 is more than 261,000.
I would estimate there's something that is.
It's 252,000.
Something that is all, we don't have the responses in vice, because we can't see of any other big entities like that, so. 40 times is totally out of reality.
You did commit questions.
We haven't decided, we haven't decided if we're gonna give away that money, that's up to the Silicones.
Are there other comments? I have a quick comment, maybe at least.
Yeah.
I just wanted to acknowledge that I understand, like, how.
acknowledge that I understand like how hard it is to take time out of your afternoon, after your evening and your families to have to come here and voice your needs. I know a lot of you, especially if you're working at the plant or working six to seven days a week, so.
Ella sabe que es muy difícil para ustedes sacar tiempo de su día, salir de los trabajos después días muy largos, salir de tus familias y estar aquí.
And I just want to say that I'm I'm hoping, you know, this is a public forum. I hope people go from the community, go back and watch it, that if they are watching this and they work next to folks who, you know, wherever they work in West Liberty, who did get that money, if they will be more supportive, so the burden isn't always on the folks who need the help, but you'll have allies and friends next time to come and advocate for you.
Yo espero que gente de la comunidad que sí recibió ese dinero también junta con nosotras, con ustedes y sea unidos para apoyar a ustedes, para la gente que necesita ayuda, solo no ellos están llegando, pero estamos llegando unidos.
Yo nomás pido y exijo, tal vez ustedes no sepan nuestras situaciones, pero pedimos que por favor se pongan en nuestros zapatos.
Alright, so as we know, no action can be taken with this, but if there's other people out there, please state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments, no more than two minutes. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment?
Name is Paul Reed. You still need my address?
That's what my notes.
One eleven Maxim Drive here in West Liberty. I actually came in to bring in some paperwork, but I'm pretty sure you all read the emails. I mean, everybody's seen the emails. You, 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 but I changed my mind on that. Because what I heard today just really upset me, okay? Do you know that Inns and Outs is part of the program?
Paul, we're not getting
I'm not going to get in the discussion of you. I've been sitting here for a long time and yes.
You do know the Inns and Outs of the Fire Department?
No, we're not going to get into this discussion.
Do you know the Inns and Outs of the Fire Department?
Mr. Reed, you're out of order.
They can't answer that though. You guys ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Paul, Mr. Reed, you're out of order.
You ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Are there other comments? No, from other than Mr. Reed.
I'm gonna keep raising my hand each and every time.
Motion to order?
Do you have a second for the motion to? Do you have any other public comments?
Yeah, I do. I'm gonna keep raising my hand like I said each and every time until my answers get till my questions get answered in a correct way without getting hostile.
But we're not, but
Okay, she did get hostile. I put in a hundred and fifty-six hours of training, working next to this man every day.
Mr. Reed, this is not the forum for.
And y'all want to speak for us?
Mr. Reed, no, that's not what's happening here. Motion to order?
I see him over there. Hi Eric.
Mr. Reed, I will ask for you to leave if we work with you. Are there public comments? Or no, on a new subject, is there other people who are here who'd like to speak on this capacity? Or on a different, on a different subject? Then we'll move on.
Madam Mayor, I'll just, we'll take a second. Can call for any public comments on Zoom if you would like to allow those as well.
Oh, okay, apologies. Any public comments on Zoom?
Let me just give a few minutes to allow either a hands up or they can unmute and make a public comment.
Do you have the chat enabled as well, Lee?
So we've given a little bit of time here and I do not have anyone making motion to just let me make sure about the chat.
Thank you for checking. So we will move on from public comments.
So then, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, so your next part is you will want to talk to each one of your council members and ask them if they received any public comments.
I just, no, and then just one by one or just can I address everybody?
You can, you can call on each one of them, okay?
Only, only that I received an email from Mr. Reed regarding to last meeting that was made. I had inquired on some statement that was in the Fire Department Minutes and I was just asking for clarification because I didn't really understand what that meant. So that's all. And that's all I have. I would, I would say that, you know, I was copied on the email from Mr. Reed and since I was copied, he is a community member, I would say that what I gathered was his his ask of Councilwoman McFerrin was to clarify the statement that she had made in the last council meeting that stated that the chief had wrote in the notes that they were sending unqualified volunteers, whereas however that was not written in the notes. I believe she was just gathering her thoughts from what she had read and making an assumption of what was written in the notes. And so there was just some back and forth there about that, so I did review the notes. I, and I know there was others too that reviewed the notes and so just wanted to elaborate on that, that the chief did not say that he sent unqualified people. And also the paper had gotten it wrong as well. They only quoted Eric. They didn't explain exactly the situation with what Kara had asked really. And so there was a lot of misunderstanding and you know, I'm open if anybody, you know, and I'm sure Kara too, or I can't really speak for her, but if anybody wants clarification on that. That's what I was about. I can explain that what I said verbatim according to the video recording was because I read in your notes, this is quote, that he was even asking your volunteers to respond to calls whether or not they were even qualified. Is that correct? That was the question. That's what I asked, exactly, unquote. And the way the notes were written, if you want to find out what that is, I can recite those too. That's simply what I was asking. Now, the basis for qualifications is broad. That doesn't necessarily mean you're sending a qualified individual. That could mean qualification as far as whether or not they have a specific ENT or ANT licensure or whether or not they have life-saving capacity or whether they're fire. I don't know because I'm not involved with that. So that is broad spectrum, but for anybody to just assume what I mean, I guess that ownership is on them. I am responding to what I say and I owe that to them. But what you're assuming or what people are assuming, I guess you all have to own that.
Oh, we have your question. I don't know if you want to read that or not, but.
Yeah, and the way I understood it is that we didn't get time because the mayor had stopped the conversation. So we didn't get time to, well, Housewoman McFerrin didn't get time to explain. There was no clarification. So people that were zooming in or might go back and watch the video and only hear those words that I read in your notes that you might be sending unqualified people may not understand that that was actually not written in the notes the way that Kara had said that. And so I think that that was the concern. It wasn't that assumptions were being made. It was, it was the exact wording of it. Because if someone hadn't looked back in the notes and said, hey, it doesn't say anywhere in there that the chief's sending unqualified people, then they would just have to take word for word what was said because we didn't have time to clarify and explain it. So it was just, that's how I understand it. Do you, is that how you understand it? I wasn't labeling anything that he said qualified or unqualified. I was asking from my perspective whether or not they were A and T, E and T qualified. I guess so. But you didn't have a chance to say those words.
Councilwoman DeMigus, finish your comment and then Councilwoman McFerrin, if you want to make another comment. And then we're gonna, I think we're gonna close this issue.
Just need to own up to it and apologize.
Mr. Reed, no. Not here, it's not tonight. Mr. Reed, it's not happening tonight.
I'm gonna apologize to you, Mayor. I'm really gonna apologize to you, okay? I'm sorry. Love you to death. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. I'll leave. Ain't no big deal to me. To admit that you are wrong. You're a coward. And it takes two hundred votes to get you out of that seat. And that's what I'm gonna do. I promise you that. Two hundred votes to get you out of that.
Mr. Reed.
So I mean, I mean, was that a threat? I was too busy. Now I won't have to sit through this crap anymore.
Well, there's nothing like a trial by fire, I guess. But I think I'd like to move on from public comment unless, yes.
I would just like to note that for counsel that I didn't receive or had my price was, was it today? He had, he had an issue with some staff removal. I got our staff that took care of it and he called me back this afternoon. Thank you for taking care of it. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
He made very good comments about your office, so.
Do you want to hold business?
Yes, quickly, the only thing you have other you're okay. Other correspondence, I just want to let you know you have received an invitation. JJ Nitching is having a open house and they provided a invitation and I placed that on the mayor's desk for mayor and council to look at. So you have that information.
And I'm sorry, where did you place it?
On your desk, there's a card.
I was wondering what this was.
Yep, so that's probably correspondence you received for an invitation.
Okay, should I pass it around or should we just, just let you know that it's here? Okay, anything else that we need to say before we move on?
We need to do some meditation.
We're just gonna move on to old business. Ordinance two zero two one one two two one dash oh three. Or the second reading and consideration to waive the third reading for adopting floodplain management, that's Liberty, Iowa.
Motion to approve ordinance two oh two one one two two one dash oh three.
So, and now I give the roll call vote.
So you can ask for any discussion.
Discussion.
Doesn't appear to have any discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
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 Councilwoman DeMigus?
Yes. Was approved? Passes by zero?
Yep.
All right. So the next one is ordinance two zero two one one two two one dash oh four. Ordinance second reading and consideration to waive the third reading for approval of reciprocating. Sorry, increasing, green precincting, thank you, for the corporate city limits of West Liberty, Iowa.
Motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance and waive the third.
Any discussion?
So just to make sure your ordinance has been updated to your option two, that you had needed the last meeting and that's the one that will be provided then too.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
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 Five oh, pass, perfect. Alright, so we're ready to move on to new business. First, resolution two zero two two zero one oh four dash oh one. A resolution to approve authorized signers for the city of West Liberty Bank accounts.
Motion to approve resolution to approve authorized signers in the city.
So, and this is just your official resolution to go to the bank to end with your nomination or an appointment of mayor pro tempore, we'll get together and have you sign. And I'll organize everything to get signatures updated with the base.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
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 Passes by zero. Set the date for city council special meet, special meeting with attorney Jamie Boston.
So this is in order to have a work session, closed session, and attorney Boston stated if you wanted to have the meeting prior to the next council meeting, basically sooner than later, he had provided, I believe, the thirteenth and the fourteenth. He would be available.
The thirteenth and the fourteenth, is that evening?
He said that anytime late afternoon, but he didn't know what work schedules were for folks, so.
It's either that or have it prior to or at your next council meeting.
Is this, can we talk about this or?
It's entirely up to you.
And then what we do is just reach back out to Jamie and then we set the agenda for that.
Before our next council meeting works really well for me.
Sure. Next council meeting, yeah, before.
Before the next council meeting. We're looking at January eighteenth at six thirty.
So to set the, the next meeting, yes, thank you, January eighteen, six thirty.
Is six thirty gonna be enough time?
If, if you want to set it at six, I mean, we're staffs here.
I only say that six is because that gives us time, because it's gonna be a long meeting, we're doing it all in one evening, to give us a break rather than rush into the council.
That make, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that's So, and then we vote on this as well?
So we have, who has the motion, I'm sorry, who has the motion for January eighteenth is Zebryas, who's the second? For the eighteen, okay, and so January eighteenth at six P M work session. And then you can, it can be a consent, so that is just a call for yea or nay.
Call for yea or nay.
Alright, thank you.
So
Sorry, CEO, you're okay. Set the date for city, I got new glasses today. Set the date for city, I got new glasses today, so I'm learning how to read this with them. But I, I finally got, I got old people glasses. My, my vocals here, so.
Mature people glasses.
Mature, yeah. I'm, I'm matured. Uh, set the date for city council work session on February 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Review the general fund budget for fiscal year 2022, 23.
Is that gonna be enough time? Are we gonna have more than one?
And so it'll be just your general fund and that's just that, um, the tax levy. Because that has to be done sooner than the rest of it. We'll be able to come back around to the general fund as we're going through the whole thing. But it'll be primarily for property tax and those, um.
Okay, motion to set February 1st at 6 for the budget review.
Second. Okay, um, any discussion? Call for votes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, five zero, pass.
So, um, on this one, just before you, so this is a, uh, the mayor appoints committees. Um, you don't not have to take any actions on this because it's been a long evening. Um, so Mayor, Madam Mayor, what we can do is you can, um, assign counsel to, uh, send you an email or communication as to what committee that they're interested in serving on. And then we can have that set and we can make it a part of your, uh, 18th meeting to, um, to approve.
I, I, I think that'd be a good idea tonight if, if everyone is okay with that.
So then you don't have to take action on it, just, just ask your counsel to, you know, respond to you which committee they're interested. I did put the list in, uh, your agenda packets, so we can. And, um, I can, uh, Madam Mayor can provide you who's currently on what committees. Um, so that way if they wanted to stay on that committee, um, then you're, you'll be familiar with where they're at now.
And I'd ask the council members, if you're on, currently on a committee and you'd like to stay on the committee, please make that note of that as well.
Sure.
That'll help me.
Thank you. And if you don't want to be on that committee, like the.
Oh, yes.
Because they forget you.
That would be helpful as well.
That was because Nick, that was his words. Okay, very good, thank you.
So do we need to, to vote to?
Nope, you just, um.
Um, discussion and appropriate follow-up, Bean, Strut and Kim Rainbow and Maxon Capital Improvement Project?
Okay, okay.
All right, I give you some information. I'm gonna give you a little more tonight. We start over here.
One staple, right? CEO, is it just?
Yep, they are. They are a little bit. You got some extras?
I just want to make sure.
But it's all in one pack.
Okay.
Yes, they're all the same. Okay. So the first one I wanted to start with, you, you put up there this one that, uh, is the evaluation. Yes. Okay. It's very similar to the last time when I met with you. We had four alternatives that we looked at. Um, and, and I, I passed it out to you. So we, what did I change from last time? Last time I had an estimate of about $2 million total. I now raised it up to 2.17 because we had 170,000 in the electrical budget that I didn't have in our contract. So, so, so I left it the same on each one of them at 2.17 because that's the estimate that is in what they call a capital improvement program. So more or less you've approved that amount of money to be used for this project, the 2.17 million. And then the next row is a current, is the current engineer's estimate based on what we've got now. All the rows to the, or the columns to the right, power pole relocation, storm water, sanitary water are all included in the engineer's estimate. So the first alternate was just more or less repave the road, put curb and gutter in, no sidewalk, no trail. And then the second one was basically to put a, put a sidewalk in without any trail. The third one was to put a trail in without a sidewalk. And then four is to put a trail on the north side and a sidewalk. And so I handed out the plan view to you that shows alternate four because that basically has everything included in it. Things that I changed on alternate four. If you go to the second page of alternate four, um, you can see right away the roads coming in from the north in the Bicy Edition. And I think that's a preliminary flat. It's not a guarantee that's gonna happen, but that's what we had from the Bicy Edition is how that would work. So we showed the roads and the sidewalks coming in and how that would interact with the trail. There was also a question about trees. How did I handle trees? And I had mentioned I didn't handle the, I knew what we were doing it, but I didn't. So this time I showed all the trees greater than six inches that would get not, that, that would have to come out. And then in the cost estimate, I also put in there that there would be 12, 12 trees replaced. We'd replace whatever tree we took out, we would replace in the cost estimate. Not necessarily you have to, but that cost estimate, which is a preliminary estimate, more or less to make sure we're on target. This is the budget we have. Are we gonna go way over? Are we gonna go way under? What we're telling you is we can do a sidewalk and a trail and stay within your budget. The next question that came up was lighting. How did I handle lighting? And I hadn't handled lighting and that's the 170,000 dollars. So we didn't have any lighting in any of the capital improvement plan. So my engineer's estimate now on the last two, alternate three and four, I added, I added two things to it. I added some relocations, which we had talked about. Then I also added some street lighting, 15 poles. And my assumption at this time was we'd do something like a, and, and this is something I'd want to work out in final design, but for cost estimating and preliminary design, we said like a pole that would have a, a light that would light the trail and one that would light the street, so kind of a dual, dual pole. I've done that before. It's kind of middle of the road. It's not as decorative. If you go to some of these downtown areas nowadays, decorative lighting is really a big item right now and it very, can be extraordinarily expensive, but also very cool. So that's something we can get to later. You know, we can look at all kinds of that stuff as we go. We can look at other grants. I think the city had gotten another grant for, for one of the other trails, so, so there's opportunity. All I'm trying to do.
I'm not contagious.
So, um, so I did put those costs in there. I put, we actually went to a vendor and got estimates for the 15 poles. And we had an estimate of about $75,000. That was for trail lighting. Then I added some lighting, just street lighting on the other side of the poles and it came up to about $100,000. Again, we haven't gone to your electrical contractor, but that's a budget number that's now in there. So if you page through and I don't want you to do this or you don't have to do this tonight, I actually even showed where I thought maybe the light poles would, would, would be. And what I was thinking is if we decide to go this direction, I'd send that to BHMD. I also highlighted the electrical pole. Um, Ed's not here today, but Ed had talked about the electrical relocations. So I highlighted where each pole were and that we, which poles we knew had to be relocated. Again, BHMD, I'm not sure. I think their numbers are high and, and my numbers are usually high at that beginning stage anyway. They haven't seen these plans. So when they see the plans, they'll firm up their numbers. But they've got to relocate six poles. I don't think that's 170,000 dollars. But I'm a civil engineer, not electrical, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go too far. What I do think is we're covered. So what, what, what we were trying to get from you is it's now the beginning of January. We'd like to go full bore with our design, so we'd have final plans and specs to go to bidders early March. That's probably the best we could do, maybe late February. But we need to know which, which of these alternates we want to go with and then we want to start getting some input from citizens and that type of thing. So I guess my question to you is, should we go forward since we're under budget with four? That's the direction I thought we would maybe go, but not necessarily sure. That's, I guess, my pitch tonight.
Does anybody have any comments?
My pitch is that when it's under budget, if you, you know, you'll never get option four done this cheap if you split it up. You know, if you do just the trail or just the sidewalk, you're gonna regret not doing the whole thing. Trust me. I've done a lot of these projects and you, you want to get it done by doing it all at once, you're gonna get the best benefit of your budget.
I think it's needed. I think it's needed because we've got a wreck area out there and we're gonna have new housing development out there. CJ and Casey are here. I didn't know if we could provide, to give them a chance to speak on it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. So, um, for those who don't know, I'm Jay Simon, um, I live in 507 East Rainbow. So I'm the last house on the east end of this, this project for the point needs, uh, the back ten more. And I, I guess my main interest and main reason for wanting to comment was about the sidewalk on the south side of the street. I guess I would want to, I would want to question whether it's necessary to have a trail on one side and a sidewalk on the other side. Uh, this is the end of town. I, I definitely acknowledge that there's a need for pedestrian route to get to Dutton. Um, I think, and I know this is in the plans to address Maxon Avenue as well. I think probably that might even be more important, pedestrian route running along Maxon on the south side to get residents there. But I know that's a future, future subject, but, um, sidewalk on our side of the street, on the south side of Rainbow would basically go nowhere. So to me, it seems like if you've got a trail on the north side of the road, that's getting your pedestrian traffic from the west portion of town. Well, I don't know how they're getting from the west portion of town to the start of that, but I'm sure that's part of the longer term plan as well, but, um. It seems like running them on the north side of the road, you've got a wide right away. Um, it's new development coming to a part of that and then city property on the east half. So it seems to me that a trail on the north side of the road is great and that makes the sidewalk on the south side of the road unnecessary. Um, I would also add that because of the odd shape of our lot, uh, between Rainbow and Maxon, we currently maintain about 1,000 feet of, um, what would be the back of curb. So if you added a sidewalk, well, on either road, but if you add, since we're talking about Rainbow, if you add a sidewalk along the south side of Rainbow Drive, that's 500, roughly 525 feet of sidewalk for me maintained. And so that's a big concern for me because that's a pretty heavy burden.
I did, I did. I thought of some of your other sites. I thought of landscaping when I was out there.
I thought of that too, the, the last council meeting, we were talking about sidewalks, how those folks who, because I don't have a sidewalk and I love not having a sidewalk during the winter time, um, how, I mean, it would affect the residents. So I appreciate you both being here and speaking out.
Okay. You know, you can, you can shorten up when you finish your sidewalk section. Absolutely, yes. You know, putting a sidewalk on that side, again, I, I don't know how necessary it really is either. But when you do a road project, a lot of times you have sidewalk on both sides of the road. If you look at the Bicy Edition, they show sidewalk on both sides, so kind of traditionally, that's what I show. We did show that number three option without it because that's definitely a thought.
Is there a safe place for folks to cross?
Is there what?
Would there be a safe place for folks to cross from the trail to the south side of the street?
Well, what we showed is a crossing at the park, of course. We didn't show another crossing. We would probably be doing a crossing and I'd have to look at that at the ma, East Maxon Ave. Maxon Ave, right where it comes in. That's a very unsafe corner. So when we do that, we were thinking somehow to put a stop sign and we'd get more of this in final, final design. So that when you're coming down East Maxon, you'd actually have to stop before you would get out onto Rainbow. And I think that would make a lot of sense for that. But again, we showed the sidewalk coming and kind of stopping there, coming around. And again, maybe that area needs a lot, a lot more thought in final design. I'm not, I'm not here to follow my sword over whether that sidewalk's there or not. And if, if you would like, we can go forward. The biggest thing I'd like to get is do you want us to go forward with the trail? If you want us to go forward with the trail, we can make the sidewalk decision later. Because that trail is a huge, not only is it a huge cost, it's a huge engineering part. It changes everything I do engineering wise, all the culverts extended and all of that type of thing. There definitely, as you can see, if you don't do the sidewalk, there is a significant savings of, um, that sidewalk also has to have, those culverts have to be extended. So that's where that cost gets in there, so.
My only concern is, I, I think there may need to be some sort of sidewalk there or sidewalk at the very tip of that triangle that you have on here on the very east side only because that would need to tie into the existing campus that they have.
And I've seen those plans too.
Around, around the, the long-term healthcare facility because they have a sidewalk for the residents to go around. And if there's a way to tap in, because right now the sidewalk you have on the east side would tap into that so that they could cross over to the trail.
So you're saying do the sidewalk on that side, but then when you get to where his house is, maybe drop it off going west?
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility.
That's a good option. I didn't think of that.
Because I think without anything there, you've got elderly residents that if they're going to utilize that trail and utilize their own uh, sidewalk trail system that they have on the campus, I think it naturally.
I can go back and look at two, one of our older, we have an older sidewalk plan too that showed, showed some additional sidewalk that way.
Were there other comments?
The only other thing I will tell you is no matter what option we go, I'll be back in front of you with some lighting options. It happens to be, um, kind of one of my little areas I like to play with a little bit. I'm doing lighting right now in Burlington, Davenport. So I'm very familiar with a lot of this, especially the downtown type of lighting type things. And, you know, maybe you, part of it, you might want to do a little nicer than the other part. Thank you.
So Madam Mayor, um, so your city engineer is presented and a part of this would be a, uh, asking for a motion um, for one of the alternates. And from those alternates, if they wanted to include in that motion, for example, let's say you go with alternate four, but that motion would stay with more discussion on the sidewalk.
I would like that.
We have a motion for one of the alternates. I make a motion for, uh, project estimate for alternate four.
Second.
And this is both with and without the sidewalk or is that what we're, um, this, the sidewalk will be discussed as part of it later?
I'll come back to you with the sidewalk and final designs, options on just the sidewalk.
So for the record, I'll, um, is it all right to, uh, Councilmember McFerrin, with your motion for further sidewalk discussion?
Yes.
Alternate four, okay.
Thank you.
Um, and so, uh, votes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Passes title. Um, so I'm, I'm going to ask a question. Um, if something is on the agenda, do, do we have to? Um, I think.
You, you can vote table it if you want to bring it up at the next meeting.
I would, I would.
Or you can table it. If you just table it, we'll go to the next meeting. If you wanted to go along, we can specify it in the table, but to a specific thing.
Okay, okay. Um, with all respect to the folks who showed up here tonight, I think given the events of this evening, um, I would, I, I would like to table, um, item F, um, until the next meeting. I, I think there's some work that needs to happen here, um, and I think we need some time for next meeting. Um, I do apologize for that, but I think I, I, I feel like it would be yes. If we waited and with all respect.
Can I ask a question? I know, I maybe should have asked it earlier in my next mic.
I, can I ask a question, I know, I maybe should have asked it earlier, my next mic, but you do it, can I stand and ask a question, or no, it's up to you then?
Uh, absolutely.
Okay, the only question I ask is, when was first brought up about the chief, and it was voted, because there was not a lawyer present, you couldn't go any further, is it normal for your lawyer to be here at your meetings? No. Yes or no?
No.
No, okay, so okay, so does he have to be invited in case there's something coming up? My thoughts would be sometimes at meetings, you might have something come up that you might need to have your lawyer here, and if he's not here, then for convenience or not, then you can't have any further discussion about it if he's not here, to me, it would seem to make sense if your lawyer could make it, that he should be at, he, she, whomever should be at a meeting, so in case there was something necessary that they could help you with, but I I guess.
It would have been nice if he'd shown, but unfortunately, he's out right now this week on surgery.
And and that makes sense, I just have a question, I don't usually attend these meetings.
And he has been available, um if we think there's items to pay him, he may not come, but we can call him and he can zoom in and be a part of that meeting. Just like to keep that in the back, you might as well, Madam Mayor, if you would like him to be available, be a zoom, we can certainly make sure that he's there.
There needs to be a motion to table.
Yes.
Do we discuss before we do that, or?
You do a motion, you're second.
Okay.
Before we vote?
You can.
Discuss before we vote, okay, thank you.
Is the motion present?
Is there a motion um to table or? Only a motion to table, we don't seem to be going anywhere. Discussion? I just I guess I would, I would I would like to make a decision based on whether or not the chief would like to speak, since he was on the agenda, that, you know, so if if he wanted to or not, you know, I would vote for what his preference was, but that's all I wanted to say about that. I think, um, well, can I participate in this discussion or is this a council? Um. I think, I think a lot of things, I think that we need to open up communication to move forward. Um. I'm thinking that with the events of this evening, that tonight is not the night to do that. Um, and I I I will be the first person to to apologize for that, and I will also say this is my first meeting, running a meeting, um and that was, that was a lot for me tonight. Um, and I wanna make sure that we go forward where everybody is comfortable with this conversation and with this discussion, and if that means having our legal counsel present, um it's unfortunate that that's where we are, but that's where we are, and um and I appreciate everyone's grace, and I I know that uh people took time out of their nights to be here tonight for it. Um, but those are, those are my thoughts for this evening, um and I support, you know, whatever council decides, but. So you can, if there's no other discussion, you can call for the new table. New table? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Next is reports, employee, city engineer, city attorney, city boards, committees, commissions. Um, the city engineer report.
Yes, um, I'd like to report the well number two in the powerhouse, they're supposed to finally get in there next week. They gave us a written schedule, saying they'd be in there next week to do the brushing and televising, shouldn't take them more than a week to get that done. And the intent of that is there's an old well in there, and we're trying to decide if we can rehab that well and make it a production. That's all I did, the only other thing I would like to report is that your wastewater director, Mr. Jurgensen and I, attended a meeting with West Liberty Foods today, they are looking at um doing some gas, not um um trying to reuse their gas and to do a digestion at, at potentially at the wastewater treatment plant, so we're kinda looking into all these alternatives and ideas, and there's nothing to present to you yet, I just wanna let you know that that is definitely moving forward.
Yeah, there've been several meetings, there's another meeting scheduled in two weeks, I was unfortunately not able to attend today, I've made all of them, told them they were, I have with this conflict with that, so.
That's, that's all I have.
And um.
On city staff minutes, if you have any questions on anything, um for those of you that are new, typically we try to have staff meeting before each meeting, unfortunately with Lee and I both being out, we asked staff to kind of put those together, nor- normally you'll get a just a two-page deal that Lee puts together and has all those minutes put together in a little more concise format, but we asked everyone, everybody to kind of just let us know what's going on, so you're aware of what's going on, that way if you have questions, then we can answer those, or if we don't have the answers, then we'll get those answers to you by a moment.
So.
And do I file or receive the reports and? Um, and and that, I I put the note in there, that would be up to Mary, you can ask to have a motion, to have a file or receive, or we just accept them as a part of a package.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we have, common practice has been they accept them as a part of the package.
Alright. Is that, we? Is there a second? Perfect.